Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Molly.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Bellisaw June High School School Board meeting. Good evening. First, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance flag. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Just wow.
Communication and public comments. Mr. Reese has something?
Yeah, yeah. Paul Reese from Bellisaw. Like I said, I commend all of you with your budget work. It's great that you go over all the numbers and stuff. But I'm sitting home, I'm kind of bored, and I said, I want to throw some entrepreneurship ideas out there for the high school. Like I said, you're sitting on a gold mine. I don't know what the laws are, the rules and regulations, but behind the high school tennis court, you have some of the best gravel around. And I know it's an act of dippity, it could be 10 years away. But there's some serious good gravel up around this area. Another thing is, when I drive by Current Hat and I see the housing thing, we have 10,000 houses shortage in Vermont. Do you reach out to a developer? Are you able? Maybe you can't, maybe you can. Can you sell some of the land to an independent developer? So you have rental units, rental houses for teachers that are here for the time being. And they only stay a year or two, they would have housing. Um, there's a lot of potential. I actually see millions of dollars sitting with the land that is owned by the high school that someone should look at in the future about developing, even if it's solar or something. Because my dad, 1968, and Tony Kissel, Kissel Hill, were some of the last developers around here that built housing developments. My dad built his, I think it was 1968, recircle development. Kissel Hill was built in the same timeframe. I'm not saying wreck the whole grounds, but I tell you what, we don't have any doctors in Vermont and dentists because they don't have housing. When I talked to the state, they said they're not going to move here, there's no housing. So I'm just saying, it could be a 10 or 15 year plan down the road where maybe you can work something with a developer and cut the tax rate in half by doing a few things different. But that's all my comment I have. But the gravel is a big one up there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I can't see who was in the corner.
Deb, right.
Richard Adams.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to make sure Ed and Mom like. So who I have on the screen?
So on the screen, we have Deb Wright, Margot.
And David. And that's it, right? Remembers?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I have a form. Just trying to make sure we aren't going too far here. I set it a funny angle to see that.
But Deb Wright has her hand up, so I don't know.
Deb, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I know this is the public comment space, but I want to speak about the three to five minutes prior to the meeting. The volume, you guys were discussing topics as though we were actually in session, which of course is a concern about open meeting law. And number two, while that was being said, the discussion stopped abruptly when Andy turned off the microphone and then the rest of us board members couldn't hear what you were speaking about. So I have a concern over that. And I'd like to caution you about having meetings that aren't scheduled prior to the start time. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we were still on budget. We worked up the budget to the last five minutes. Maybe we weren't clear enough on that, but I think we were still on the budget meeting.
I didn't hear you close the meeting. That's, that was my concern. So.
Okay, I did say you adjourn, but thank you. We'll be more careful.
Molly, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, we went from Pledge of Allegiance to communication, public comment. We skipped over adjustments to the agenda.
Um, any adjustments to the agenda? Yes.
Is there an executive session tonight?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, we do need it.
Yes, there will be an executive session.
Thank you.
After director's comments. Jim?
That was mine. I wanted to follow up on some stuff.
Okay. So after director's comments will be an executive session. Any other adjustments? Uh, the only thing I see on here, John, is financial literacy. I had asked for that to be on the agenda, and then I was told that maybe they were not able to attend. Are you presenting that?
No, uh, can we push it to our next meeting, the two that?
Do you have enough knowledge to at least help David get up to speed? Because he was going to ask for that.
I have a little bit of knowledge, but not, not enough that it's going to be, I mean, I can speak the sound of it. Um.
So we'll leave it on there and see if you can help. David had asked for that to be on. It's, we keep bumping it, and so we'll see what we can do with that. Um, review and approve board minutes of December 12.
We would love that we approve the minutes.
As written?
As written, right. Did not see anything that's really glared at me, so I would as say as written. And see if there's anything else.
Anyone have any adjustments or corrections on December 12? Okay. Well, there's a motion to approve the board minutes for December 12. David, how do you vote?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
I.
Brenda?
Yeah.
Priscilla?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Thank you. Reports, finance report. Jim, it's all you.
Okay, uh, I passed out this June 6th financial report.
January.
Excuse me. Been on one of those days.
Yes.
So January 6th.
To be somewhere.
Uh, and this is by function. And I think this is what majority of people felt more comfortable with. And I just want to say, if you look at page three, which gives you a, this is, this is what's coming off from the e-finance system that you currently um, use.
That we're getting rid of.
That we're not getting rid of soon enough. Uh, but this gives you a breakdown kind of of how um, it was set up. And I, I just want to say, right now, if you look at the very top line on page three, and you look way over to the right, you can see, uh, and this is teacher salaries. Molly, can you find that one?
Yeah, I got it.
All right. So, so you're, you're a million six in the hole with that top line. And I think that's only because right, right now, the way e-finance is pulling it in, it's pulling in all of the teacher salaries into that line one. Because you'll look down, um, further in, and you can see that, that the teacher salaries, even though the budget is there, there's no activity, there's no encumbrance, there's no expenditures. This is, this is not easy, but I think it looks as if right now that you're going to end up with somewhere between, you know, 470,000 to the good right now. That's not encumbered, not expended. But keep in mind that any salaries that we are paying, if there's a contract involved, we've encumbered those funds and we're expensing them as we pay it. So on the top line, general, I'm, I'm on line, uh, page two. And you, and you'll see there's 470,000 to the good, which is all right. And I think, I think keep in mind that you've got a lot of supplies that are not expended, that are probably not encumbered as well. But you could see further, um, further expenses there. Um, athletics. Again, all of the salaries, the coaches' salaries have been encumbered. But you've only got 13,000, you know, that's, that's available ultimately. And again, that's, it's a hard one to pin down because at the end of the football season, they have to recondition that equipment, send it out, it'd be checked over. Um, and I don't know how much of that's been encumbered. I, I think overall, uh, if you look at the very bottom, we've got 671,000 to the good, which again, we'll see where we end up with snow plowing, with fuel, with specific building projects. But my guess is, you're, you're not going to have a lot left at the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
I think it's going to be a very close budget.
You know, we have six months left to go.
Yep, and it's, it's a tough six months. Um, if you would, if you have any questions on that particular summary sheet, you know, again, I, I apologize that, that the, the backup doesn't track real well. I mean, uh, the, the system and how we put stuff together was not, uh, not easy, not smooth. And again, uh, we fixed some of that and how we're going to go forward with it to make it easier and understandable in the future. Sorry. But the revenue sheet on page 17, I just want to say, you know, the revenues for taxes, and I'm looking at line 16. That's the taxes that we received so far, 2,031,000. And we've got 1.8 million remaining for the rest of the year. Uh, on, I just want to say, on line four, local revenues, we've got 143,000 on column I. That was the budget. And other than, other than the one student from Two Rivers, um, not sure, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to balance that out. So we may get 20,000 for Two Rivers. Unless, John, you can get some more students, tuition students in. Um.
So is that line for that? Is that line for kids that are coming in?
Uh, it, I mean, I labeled it as local revenues because I wasn't sure what the 142 was for.
Yeah.
So I.
Is that part of the rollover of surplus as well that we scheduled? Was that shown?
Oh, I, I don't know. Did you roll over?
Yeah, about three years, 100,000 per year, I believe, last year.
We had some that, that wasn't in for the years. Remember that, Molly?
We did have, so we did.
Yeah.
Anyway, we'd have to go back, and I don't know what it is. Um, my.
Does anybody have any, the warrant or the, the vote?
Yeah, we've got, I've got the report.
Can you just send me a copy? You don't have, you know, uh, because if it was surplus that was going to that line, that, that's awesome.
There was, where they, where we took so much and put it into um, active of taxpayers.
Yep.
For, for like the next two or three years or something.
Good, very good. Um, so, so the other thing, the other big chunk of, of support is the Ed Grant, the Vermont Educational Grant monies. And again, we, but the budget for what we're supposed to receive is 3,24,000. And we have received two thirds of it, 2,016,000. Uh, I think it's, it's April, May timeframe when we get the last piece of that. And now we'll balance that out. So I think your revenues are, are coming in.
So can I just ask a question? So you said something about that local revenue. Excuse me then. So when we were talking about kids coming in from other schools, and this is kind of our topic, but it's, it's that line you just said.
Yep.
Um, I was told that we don't get paid for those kids coming from another school district. But that's not what you just said.
Right.
But Priscilla told me we didn't get paid for that stuff.
We don't get paid for school choice students. If their district does not have a school and they pay for their students to go to other schools, then we can get paid from that school. For example, we've had a student that came from Weathersfield and they didn't have a high school on there. They're paid for whatever district they went to. So for that student, we could get paid. But if it's a school choice and they have a high school in their district, we don't get, we don't get any pay, just like if our student goes to another district, um, they don't get paid because our, we have a district.
So the student that we have that is from, what'd you say?
Two Rivers.
Two Rivers, they don't have a high school.
Black River Cliffs.
Black River. Right.
So.
The answer to the question is they don't have a high school.
Right.
So does school choice work across the river? Since we're so close to New Hampshire, so.
School choice is, is something within Vermont, so high school students can go.
So if.
Basically go to any high school as long as they get accepted.
So if a kid lives in New Hampshire currently, then one of his parents have to live in Bellisaw?
Correct, or you would pay the announced tuition rate.
Okay.
Like if they wanted to tuition their child into.
Because a lot of times, and it's going to do with the budget, is a lot of times I hear conversations about how we need to get kids from other schools to come here. But the truth of the matter is, the only kids that we want to come here are the ones that don't have a high school.
And then, then the only, the only other cost you might be able to recoup on that is if a student, uh, receives student services, the special education services, then you can charge back for those special education services that you might be income, you know, be paying out.
Through insurance?
Nope. So let's say a student, uh, comes from Leland and Gray. I'm just making it, you know, so they, they, they come here for whatever reason, and they have an IEP. Leland and Gray is still responsible for, as LEA, for the Local Education Agency. So they're still responsible to maintain the IEP and everything. But teachers here would be providing the services so we can bill Leland and Gray for the cost that it's, for the, for that cost for us.
So that's no different than if a kid goes to Compass School and, and it's from this area. It should have been here, should have been at the high school. We have to pay Compass for that?
Compass has a, a special education teacher, yes, and, and there is a, we work, you, we work out a contract with them, yeah, for those services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're off topic, but that's what, you know, I think there's some gray area there.
Yep.
You think you're getting rich because somebody came because they wanted to play for your football team, but you're really not.
You're really not.
We're paying.
Any questions for Jim? Anybody in cyber world got a question for Jim? All right.
The only thing that I do want to say though, because, um, there's such a separation, you know, when you're looking for a specific account and people say, where the heck did you put this? And, and I apologize, I wish that I could fix it. But, but again, we were so far off track and, and we're trying to, to bring the data in correctly, but it's just, uh, it's, it's a, it's very difficult for everyone. And I, I'm so sorry that you have to go through that crossover into the new account system, but you'll be 100% in compliance with the state of Vermont and be able to find what you need when you need it.
The auditors must be having a field day with us.
Yeah.
But, but rushing it isn't going to make it better for us, it's going to make it worse. So I'm taking our time and I appreciate that. Thank you, Jim.
So Jim, normally I set you free, but I guess I'd like to stick around a little bit. We got budget discussion coming up, and I think it'd be good to have you here.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, no other questions for Jim. Seems like we let him off easy tonight.
Hey, hey, never let him off easy.
John?
Okay. Not for vacation, not, not too much. Uh, with sports, your old basketball, uh, the two and five, fairly competitive. They've played a few of their tougher opponents. Uh, boys' basketball, three and four, they won a close game on Saturday against, um, White River Valley. Very good, very exciting game. Small indoor track team that competed at UVM over the past few weeks, and they've scored. We've got all our kids getting, um, PRs for their individual events and fairly excited about it. So it's all pretty healthy. Um, tech center visits in the next four weeks. We're working with both tech centers with our sophomores. Last Friday, I'll be the visit and presentation from Wyndham Regional Career Center in Rattleboro. Uh, and on 2/6, we'll be having a presentation from River Valley Technical Center. Um, we're taking today, uh, we took kids to Wyndham Regional Career Center. And then on the 10th of February, we're taking students to go and visit the RBTC and their programs to see what programs might interest them, and we'll see them in action. Uh, incoming freshman class, uh, we're beginning our freshman class registration next month. Uh, the prospective students will visit or begin class signup. The class signup process, uh, sending schools will forward as much information for recommendations as possible. This year, that's going to be very pertinent. And we're going to try and uncover every, uncover every stone we can to find out exactly what kids need. Uh, because there's a lot of lost learning out there. Uh, engineering projects, uh, M&amp;E Engineering, they're still working on the bids. Uh, Mike emailed me, Mike Sullivan, um, emailed me today from M&amp;E, and he said he's hoping to be done by Friday to get the accurate cost for this HVAC. Uh, and then, of course, we have to present, once we get the bids out and get a number, we have to present that to the state for funding. Uh, generator work is not yet finished, as we spoke about earlier. Uh, the, the circuit, there's one part of it that wasn't initially part of, um, our project work that we still need a little break for the breaker. And then there's training that Sean will get from the guys that did it on the new circuitry that we installed, uh, to bring him up to speed on how to operate it all. That's pretty much all we've got for now.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley? Jason?
Um, John, um, is there a reason? I'd like to see the vice principal come to meetings as well. Is there a reason why? I remember I used to watch and you used to always be here, and I haven't seen her recently.
This year, uh, with her, she's got a young family as well, but doing her, um, college courses, checking in with her mentors and her tutors there, completing work. Trying to be a little bit more light with her, uh, for a lot of the evening stuff. I'm trying to cover like a few more basketball games as well to give her more time to settle in and get that job done well. But hopefully, in the, in the long run, like I keep reminding her, next year she wanted the college work to do. So that's going to be more on the plate. Um, she does go to as much as she can go to, uh, which I feel has been pretty good this year. Uh, but to answer your question, hopefully, I'm trying to convene in this year. And as she moves on, you'll see her more and more of them.
I, I personally like to see her at every meeting. I mean, it's, it's a big job being number two. Um, so I think, I think that would be important. Um, Molly, may I continue? I have a couple of questions.
Can you continue?
Yeah, yeah, I'll wait.
Um, uh, last month or two months ago, we had the Guidance Department and, and, um, the, one of the social studies teachers talked about how she was extremely biased one way, and, uh, we did a tour and we looked at her room and, and she was correct. She was extremely biased one way. And then we had mentioned in passing that you would, uh, take a look at that. I was just curious if you had a conversation.
I had a conversation with her. She, again, she reiterated her meaning of bias was everyone has a bias, uh, it wasn't related to her topic. Um, I feel that in her teaching, she's, um, doesn't demonstrate bias. Um, and when I get in to do her supervision this year, her evaluations this year, I feel we'll be able to see a little bit more in action. Uh, but yes, I've spoke to her, but she didn't feel that she was.
Do you have to schedule that with her? Oh, you do?
Well, no, there's a walk now, we're, we're doing walkthroughs and for those that are on my center, which I'm not sure that she is, on her completion.
So I want to make sure.
But yes, there'll be, there'll be observations, walkthrough observations at a minimum, which, um, are not, they're walkthrough, just where they are, they, they're popping.
So I just want to make sure you, you said that you had a conversation with her and then, um, you kind of coached her and she, um, gave you some input and you're keeping an eye on it. Basically, okay. Um, and I, when I signed off the latest warrants, there was, uh, some, some bills for, uh, science, uh, I'm assuming. It was a bunch of hazard chemicals that were, um, purchased and signed off for. Uh, my question is, who is the hazard communication teacher here? Who's responsible for training?
Right now, they're all, um, through their certification, they're all certified to accept and receive. Patty has, Patty Murray has been doing most of, uh, the controlling of it. And, uh, if I can, if I can. She put it right for me, um, that every chemical was ordered, is currently listed as MSDS document. Uh, they have both a disc and a paper copy. There's a three-ring binder on the bookshelf in her lab. Um, and the yellow, the yellow, above the yellow pliable cabinet, uh, plus a copy, a paper copy that is included in every box upon delivery of each chemical. Companies have to list vinegar as a hazard is chemical due to the fact that it's an acid. Just to give you a perspective of how companies have to discern products. Isopropyl alcohol is listed as a hazard is chemical due to the fact that it's vulnerable. Uh, and again, uh, if you could ask for the specific chemical that we're looking for, I mean, I don't know if you had any, again, I.
No, no, it just brought up a question to me because every, every employer has to have a right to no station and a, uh, sign off. Every employee has to be signed off on every chemical that's in the building, like hand soap, for example. If somebody puts it in her eyes, you got to know what the first aid is for. So my question is, who's administering training? And then do we make sure we go through that with all the kids? And then if we're not, it's a great opportunity to, um, teach the kids as they get into the real world that, you know, one of those things that is going to happen to them wherever they work, whatever career they go into.
I believe that's something that we need to improve on that.
And are those sent to the fire departments? I think they're supposed to be yearly.
Um, just let me see. I, I, I believe it will be, but again, I, that's some thought that we said it could be as well.
Yeah.
You know, for sure, you're supposed to have a list, yeah, here, like you, you have to have a list. I don't know if you have to send it, but I will have to check on that, but it's probably good practice to send it from. Are you, are you, uh, did you go through all of that? Do you know what all the chemicals are and?
No.
Right?
I didn't know.
Good opportunity for, so you know what the first aid is in case, like, like some of the things you would. Good opportunity for, so you know what the first aid is in case, like, like some of the things you would, you would assume. Water would flush out your eyes with water, but some of the things you can't flush out. So it's, you know. A- and again, it's all about safety for, for the students and for the people that work here. Um. And that's all I have. Thank you.
June, you're next.
I was just wondering if in the future you could um, report on the JV's um. Record as well.
Sure.
Um. Thank you. Cause they don't get any recognition.
No, I wouldn't.
Jim? I, I just wanna say, um, superintendent had all staff, there was a course that we had to uh, take. As part of mandatory training, the mandatory training. And, and I wanna tell you, I've been in the business a long time. They used to call them material safety data sheets. And it's changed.
Yeah, they're called safety data sheets now.
Yeah, so uh, I can only say I picked that up on this training and uh, it was valuable. And I, I think that uh, it just, it points you and focuses you in needing those safety data sheets. And, and hopefully they can collect them at each school right in the office. So.
Deb?
Yes, I wanted, um, because Mr. Bradley is um, the person at this part of the juncture of the agenda. Um, to clear up a little additional information that we just learned last meeting about the, apparently there are two dogs. Uh, therapy dogs at the high school. I'd like to know what our budget for that is, where we budget it and how much we spend on an annual basis. I mean, I believe. I got told by a student um, a couple of days ago that one of the dogs had just got there after a year, gotten their certification. So I'm assuming. We pay for the certification, we pay for the insurance, we might be paying for the inoculations. I'd just like a clearer picture on the amount of money we spend on that sort of thing. All the liability issues are cost, cost money and I'd like to know what we spend on that on an annual basis. As I never knew anything about the um, therapy dogs until June brought it up last meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't spend anything on the therapy dog.
You already said you have insurance, that's cost money.
Individuals have insurance.
Yeah, you just, just explained her, what it is.
Yeah, the, the, all dogs go through a very rigorous uh, procedure to get them. Uh, qualified, trained, insured. Health and safety checked for the dog vaccinations, um. I'm thinking, what else is in the folder? Uh, they, and the owners provide all that and pay for all that. And they. That's what they do.
They don't get reimbursed in any way, shape or form through the school system for the costs.
To my knowledge.
So, so this, the school system has not requested that the dogs be present. The owners. Who have their dogs certified have asked that they could bring their dogs in. And so that, they've been given permission to bring their dogs in, but. It's, they've, they have the, the training and everything. We haven't asked that they bring dogs in on a regular basis kind of thing.
I, I'm confused and they're here every, are they in the school every day when the um, the handler is in the school?
Uh, they were, but they haven't been since our last meeting.
So are they therapy for the students or are they therapy for the? Owner?
Therapy for the students, therapy for other staff members. I don't believe the therapy for the owner, they could be. That I don't know. I mean, I don't agree with that.
So why are they not here now?
Because we were asked to make sure we had all our stuff for them and. Uh, everything, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and. Uh, board members have certainly made the recommendation that we shouldn't have dogs in school and not do it. So until we make a final decision, uh. Now, we don't, we don't have to have them in. We could have them in, me personally. Do I think, and again, it's, I know we have the policy on it, I think they're a great asset to our school. Um, individually, but again, board members, uh, were questioning it, um.
Priscilla, I see your hand, but I'm gonna let June finish.
That's fine. Um, so in your email to me, it said that the, that the nurse um, checks for. Allergies, so she has checked and there are no adult or student allergies here.
They continually check in with her as uh, classes change and in the um. Where Patty's had her dog here fifteen years, we checked on a lot of kids that have allergies. Or they could have allergies that don't. And the nurse in, in confirming with her. That they actually do that and there are no dog allergies from her.
So you're just checking the kids that are in those classes with the dog?
They have checked in.
They haven't checked the school?
The nurse has checked everybody, everybody in the schools, a kid wise, not adult wise, but kid wise. And I, and I've asked her to, uh, when we had our last meeting, that we could look at everyone because again, we don't want adults getting. Allergies, although, so.
Priscilla, you're up.
Okay, uh, this is a total change, John, but you have furnished us an attendance. And I guess my question is, it talks about default present. For example, um, on the fourth, it says two hundred and fifty seven. Twenty nine were absent, two hundred and fifty seven, and then it gives you present underneath that of thirty. I don't understand why there's a default present in the separate present for thirty. And you got twenty nine out of three sixteen absent to give you ten percent plus absent, which is. Looking back, there's a lot of absences. But anyway, my question is, has to do with, if you can explain the default present and the present?
So they were looking at our distant, yeah. The default present, because when, when teachers um, in our school, if you don't mark anything. The student is present. So the teacher doesn't take, like if everybody's there, you don't need to enter anything in. So it relies a lot on the, the, the group even attendance.
Okay, so I would add those two together, I have the default present and the present together. That, for example, in the fourth, I got two eighty seven. And if I added that two eighty seven to the twenty nine absent, then I get my three sixteen. Okay, that brings me to the next part of that. We have sixty students at River Valley check in eleven at um, the other tech center. Those I must be being added into those, but they don't actually.
I would.
In our building receiving any instruction from our teachers for at least two periods. From if they're going to the Springfield and possibly all day if they're going to Brattleboro.
No, it's uh, morning, morning, they're either here in the morning and they leave at eleven o'clock. Both technical centers to go to, um, or they get the bus at seven oh five and go in the morning and they arrive back here. At about ten thirty, which they go into period four and then blocks three and block four. So.
Right.
So they get five eights of that day, yeah.
Okay, so that seventy, so seventy one students at the tech centers would only be here part day.
Part, part of the time, yeah.
Five additional students are out full time.
Yeah.
Definitely. Okay, which means that we've got two hundred and forty students in the building. A possibility of two hundred and forty if they're, if it's a hundred percent attendance. All day, okay. I'll clarify, thank you.
Margot, you're next.
Sorry, I hit the mute button, was mysterious for a second. I wanna kind of come back to the therapy dog um, issue. And I just wanna mention a few things um, that cross my mind when I am hearing about this topic. And one, John, you mentioned that it was a, you know, kind of a directive from the board that we not have the dogs in the building until. We had it all sorted out. And I wanna point out, this was not a directive of the board. It was a few members of the board had concerns. And that is very valid, but it does not mean that if we're not in violation of policy, then. You know, it's, it was not a full directive, it was questions from the board and maybe even a few recommendations. But not from the whole board. Like for I, one, for example, am very supportive of therapy dogs in the building and they can be a very valuable asset to. Um, a learning environment. I recognize that there are allergy concerns. I have very severe allergies for certain things. Um, but I don't like, for example, dust. And I don't think the school is gonna be dusted because. I wouldn't be able to be in that environment. We don't do this for other allergies. Um, there are severe peanut allergies, severe uh, nut allergies. We know of students who have those, but we don't say that students can't bring in a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Or that uh, somebody in the building can't eat smallments. We ask that everyone be aware, or if they're sitting at a table, that the questions be asked. And so I just wanna point out that we have to be very cautious and we have to look at what the policies say. If we don't like the policies, then we have a discussion about that. But in this case, you know, my understanding is that the policy has been followed and um, is not being broken. So I just wanted to point out those few things because I think we're s- overstepping a little bit from where. What is the board and what is feelings of individuals? Valid or not, I, I'm not putting any judgment, I'm just saying we have to be cautious as a whole board. What we are actually saying and what we're recommending as an individual. So, thank you.
Uh, so Margot, sorry, it was a directive from me. Um, to, because I was not aware of um, the second dog in the building. Um, that started this year and um, the other animal uh, has been here that. Um, was under the previous superintendent. And so wanting to make sure that we have all the correct shots, everything. I've asked, I asked John to ask that they not be in the building until we've got that all cleared up, so that we can. I can say assuredly to, to, to board members and concerned people that we are, we all have our ducks in a row, so. So it was not the board, but I, I took the concern. That just put her hand.
Uh, thanks.
Thank you.
I only put my hand back up because Margot's referencing a policy, we don't have a policy about dogs in the building. Do we? Nothing more.
We do, yeah. I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we do have a policy about it.
Is that, is that about dogs coming in with people or dogs staying in the building? Cause it's two different things.
It's, it's about dog, it's about animals, not about dogs, it's about animals in the building. And they have to be spiritified therapy animals.
So. Um, so you're next.
Okay, yeah, and so have we gotten all of those answers yet or we're still working on those answers because as Margot said, you know, if. You know, we wanna make sure that it's safe, but if it's a good thing for the school, we certainly want to be able to have that. Um, ability to, to run them in.
We just got our last certificate that I was asking for. Uh, and Andy and I just have not had a chance to talk about it yet, to be honest. I mean, it's. And, and you're right, it wasn't a directive from the board, although it qualified that, it was a concern. And the directive, we followed that and we just haven't talked about it further now that we've got everything in that we believe we have in, so. Um, so I think that's what we're at.
Well, the, the policies B thirty five and B thirty five that covers that.
Get that, Deb?
You're muted. You're muted.
Just, just repeat that again, please, I can write them down.
B thirty five and D thirty five cover animals in classroom and on school property.
Thank you.
So I don't keep beating this rotten can around the room, but there's a couple of questions that I'm gonna ask because I think it's. Important that we are, just get this cleared up. So we have a policy about animals in the school. We spent two hours on it on the policy committee when they were beautiful outside. And we talked a lot about how this can happen. And so, oh. I wouldn't have kicked the can down the road, but it's open to going down, so. And have they really? Qualify, do they really have some qualified training? Of being a, you know, some sort of therapy dog, because I'll tell you from personal knowledge that. You know, I know where there's a dog that has paperwork that says it's trained because you went on Google search and you printed it and you. Signed it and yep, this is my therapy dog. Um. It's very, very easy to get somebody to tell you that their dog is an emotional supporter, things like that. I am not gonna say one or the other, how, what I think about it. I do think that, yeah, I am, cause I always do. I do think that it's a distraction. Um, if it is in a room, we don't have rooms here. So if it was in its own room where kids were in a situation where kids were in that room all day long. Where, you know, that maybe helped settle down some kids that maybe. You know, were, were up here a lot of times and maybe that dog helped them, but hopefully by the time we're at this age. We're not at that point either, but you know, we can learn how to kind, how to help the child learn and. And, you know, unless we're teaching that. Unless that child has to take responsibility of the animals, we're teaching them something about taking care of an animal. I, I don't, and I don't want them to do that. I, I just don't see where the benefit is. And don't get me wrong, I love my dog. I'm not against dogs, but I don't see the benefit of it being in school. And I know we have a policy on it. And so. If I was gonna tell you what the policy said without reading it, I'd tell you that the policy says that. If Joe Schmo wanted to bring their dog in for an afternoon for some sort of um, a, a class, uh, you know. You know, maybe the kids learned. You know, how to control a dog as far as training it, having it to sit and shake and, and, and maybe that helped those kids learn something about. Training themselves, I don't know, but. Anyways, that's my two cents. We have kicked it around enough. So does anybody else have any dog questions or can we move on? Um, any other questions for the principal?
Could I just add one more thing onto his report? Cause I think it's, it's, it's important for the high school and for the public to know about it, which is um. There is a um, career tech ed study happening right now um, in the state of Vermont. And um, they are going to be um. Doing a um, listening of, uh, like a listening tour. And so they're gonna be at uh, the River Valley Tech Community um, Center um. Tomorrow from four to five thirty. So if folks are able to um, attend, it would be great. And then they are doing another one with um. The Wyndham Regional Career Center. And of course, I cannot. Find that date um, in time, but it's a couple more days uh, later, but we can get that published and out. Just think, um, I think they're on the twelfth at um. At the Career Center down in Brattleboro. And so they're just looking for feedback and whatnot. And so. We have many of our kids, as we just heard, attend those places and they're, they're a great resource for us, so. That's all.
Um, anything else for Mr. Bradley? So Andy, only because I missed it on the agenda, this is a, a time too where we don't have, um. I didn't get Andy on the. Agenda, I guess, as far as a superintendent's report, but is there any questions for Andy? I mean, his superintendent's report gets sent to us. And he's here and if you got a question, let it rip.
June. Um, thank you.
Do that for you.
Thank you for that, a- after I found it. Um. My, I have a follow-up question to that. I would like to know if you're out. Who's second? If you're out, who's second? Who, like, you were out in on medical leave for a while. Who was who's second and then third and?
Yeah, I mean, Deb, Deb Cardane. We don't have an assistant superintendent and so. If I'm out, if I'm out, um, Deb Cardane assumes those responsibilities. Um, when I was out on medical leave, I did check with the secretary and I did not need to name someone officially.
Okay. She's our director of innovation and instruction. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Andy?
I have one more, sorry.
Yes, June.
I see some of these fundings are ARPA, ARP, ESSER. And medical reimbursement and S R two, title four, what happens when they run out?
So title funds we get every year.
Okay.
Those fluctuate year to year. Uh, Medicaid uh reimbursement, we get on a regular basis. Um, so that's through special education and rebilling. So it's a, it's a reinvestment, that's what they call it. And then any are, any ESSER um positions are. Um, they do sunset when the grants go away. And it's a decision to either move them into other grants or into local or to um. Not continue that position.
When does ESSER go to bed?
So ESSER two um is complete as of September of twenty twenty three. Yep, I did my year right, so and then ARP is September twenty-four.
Is there anything else for Andy? Because John, we, that one thing you didn't report on, not that I'm trying to write your report for you or not, but. Um, we talked about getting a bond written and we were gonna talk about what we were gonna put in the bond and. Um, so we're gonna have budget discussion, but really the bonds after these projects that we're talking about. And I think there should be some discussion about it, because this is super important to get it. Out so that it gets to the towns, so that it gets on the ballot, so that the towns get a chance to roll on it. So, um, I thought a lot about, you know, how do you approach this to get these things done because. You know, we've we've got a driveway project here that we. Started, so the first, this one is dated uh January twenty-nine, twenty twenty. This was approved by all towns except for Rockingham, they didn't get it on the ballot. We have to revoke, uh, we have to put it through again and all the towns have to uh vote on it again. Um, on town meeting day when when everybody votes. We also have a a very large. Job to do, the the high school needs a new roof. And so. I talked to Jim a little bit today on, you know, what was the best way to try to look at that to make it so that. Um, it's affordable for us to be able to do it and and to get two big jobs done. That are, there are things that aren't gonna go away. Um, especially the roof, I mean, if your roof starts leaking, you're you're in trouble. Um, so I'd like to know, did you get an updated, you were gonna try to get an updated bid on the driveway project?
Uh, I didn't get an updated full bid. I talked to uh Corey Threshy today. And last week as well. Uh, from Stevens and Associates who's involved in what you're looking at right there. Um, and again, it was kind of an ambiguous conversation because we've got to wait for the. The board, we've got to wait for the town to vote on the bond. And the job is approximately gonna be two million. And again, Jim, I've been in communication with yourself because I don't. I'm not fully aware of the process of writing the bond. That would come out of you, your office. Um, there, kind of what we did with, or what we're currently doing with M and E. Where M and E are the clerk at works, Stevens again were and. I I believe would be, I don't know if we need to put that out.
They can't bid on the project if they write the proposal. They can't bid on the project if they write the proposal.
So, so we have to, we have to do that.
So my question is.
So they can help write it, I mean, but they can't then bid on it, so I mean.
So, I guess what I'm trying to make sure we know, because. Jim can't help us get a bond written and get it on the ballots and and see what the townspeople will do for us. Until we have some numbers, because, oh, so we, somebody needs to be, they gave me a number on the roof. Um, can they give me a number? They won't give a an estimate on it?
I, they, well, they gave me in an email an estimate of saying that it would be approximately two million based on.
I didn't, I didn't, that's not what I got out of the first conversation, though, I'm just trying to. So, um, I see you.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, um, my. Okay, I'm gonna stick my neck out. My goal is that we as a board at least. Put this on the ballot to get these two jobs done with a bond that Jim will help us. Uh, with, so he can tell us on that article what the payment will be, right?
Yeah.
And, um, be able to try to start doing. Two jobs that need to get done. If they're not done, we talk about presentation, we talk about, you know, what looks good for our, for our kids. It's about our kids, it's for our own concern, you know, if we're, you know. So we get upset with them because maybe they peel out through here, but when the place looks as bad as it does, you know, how can you tell them? You can tell them and I would tell them they're my child, but my point is. We don't, not even just presentation of the driveway, you got a real drainage problem, you got potholes you're filling every year. It's needed to be fixed for five or six years now. We decided back in twenty twenty to get it going and then. Somebody dropped the ball, so it didn't get done. And the roof is, the roof is just a job that you can patch a rubber roof. All day long if you want to, but you'll never find a hole.
But isn't that ESSER funds? Are we putting all the roofs in the district?
There isn't enough ESSER funds to pay for everything you want to do.
No, but.
So there is a strat, there is a strategy there, but I mean. And and I, the conversation we had was, if you put it into a bond, that then. Does open up, you know, if if we want to redo things inside the school, I mean, there's only so much money and if, you know. Right now, I've, I've heard, we put aside two million for the HVAC system, I have not seen one thing other than heard. That it's three point two million. So as projects go up, we're gonna have to start making decisions of where, what projects don't happen. Because that is gonna be the reality of 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 those pieces, so I, you know, um.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just making a suggestion. June, you're up.
So, a question on the bond, if we have to have an article. To bring up, so Westminster's cutoff for the um. Town report is Friday. This Friday. That's when we were told that we had to have all our stuff in if we wanted it included in the report.
So, this, school can't, you can't post, um, it's um, no more than thirty. Um, no, no more than forty, no less than thirty days for one article for town meeting. And we have our reports, like our town reports aren't even due for a few more weeks.
So you don't have to have that included in the town report for the warnings of the articles?
We do our own separate.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the towns would love to have it like two months ago, trust me. We understand that and we appreciate.
No, I would just wanted to make sure that we were gonna allow ourselves enough time to make it happen because town. Meeting for Westminster is the last Saturday of February.
Okay, no, but but the school town meeting is in March. First Tuesday, first second Tuesday.
So the article, um, the article still needs to be in the.
The seventh is.
In the town Westminster report, isn't it?
I, you're you're into a new area for me with 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 that, I don't know.
All right, because town meeting for Westminster is the Saturday before. March.
March seventh.
Whatever everybody else is, whatever everybody else's is, it's the last Saturday in February.
The town meeting is March seventh, uh, that's when we vote and I think that. So town, our town meeting will be the fourth this year.
Okay, it's the Saturday before.
Yeah.
Uh, Deb, you're next and then David.
I just, again, um, I, my understanding is that ESSER money could be used for. Um, infrastructure, this is exactly what this is, and in the meantime, since we've gotten our, the money in, we've been frittering it away on different projects and things. Um, I don't, um, which basically have to do with personnel. And this is infrastructure which will last us for a long time and this building was built in nineteen seventy. And need, definitely needs some repair, you can see what Green Mountain High School is doing and all that stuff right now. And I don't understand why we have to go to bond and pay that and get the the taxpayers to have to pay that too, doesn't make sense to me. At all, and I I won't, I won't agree to that. Um, but then again, I'm only one board member. Uh, but again, there's money to pay for, we have money we can use to pay for this infrastructure and if it needs to be divided out between the schools. Um, evenly, whatever's left over, so be it, and get some infrastructure done that'll last us another twenty, thirty, fifty years. Whatever it is, that's what the money needs to be spent on at this point, not what we've been spending it on already. Thank you.
David, you're next.
Thank you, Molly. Bellas Falls Union High School District Twenty-seven is its own unique municipality. And while I agree with June, it would be nice to have the details available for the Westminster Town Report. The um, critical reporting will be in the high school's annual report, so, um. I just trying to express the fact that um, it's meeting our statutory deadlines is gonna matter as to whether or not. Um, we seek the bond uh correctly.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Deb, do you have another question? Your hands up. So do we need to have a vote to ask Jim to work on this or?
You can have Jim work on things, but as far as you'll need a motion at some time to.
So we should put that on the next meeting, next agenda?
Just because it is a.
Yep, yep, I understand that. Okay, I wanted to just, we didn't talk about that and I thought it was fairly important to at least get it out there. Um, we're all done with John. So we're gonna go to unfinished business. Uh, John, can you speak to financial literacy or at least let us know more?
I didn't, I didn't really come prepared, uh, and I know that, um. It it, it's a big, it's a big, uh, it's not a big task, but it's a task, it's been ongoing. Um, we're developing, we have developed a financial literacy curriculum. And again, I'm speaking for the math department, so I may not always be totally correct. Um, uh, they've done a lot of work through the next gen personal finance, which is. Uh, second to none in the ratings of Champlain College where they do a lot of the courses. Um, where they teach, um, people how to. Uh, distribute the course. Um, we've adapted our financial literacy course from that. Document or those documents using a lot of their resources, A because they're state of the art and B because they're free. Um, in my conversations with Haver, Maureen Haver loves next gen personal finance. And thinks it's spot on. Uh, we're also looking to have, um. Mike Stack support us down the line as we move into teaching the, the actual curriculum. With speakers and professionals and financial people to come in and present to our class. Um, we are, um. Gonna, at our next Haver meeting, which will be scheduled before the end of this month. Um, talk a little bit about. The actual curriculum and go over it there and get input from our Haver committee, because again, that's a. That's an integral part of what we drive, uh, what we do with the, the funds as well. Um, and as I say, the two people that would come and present it were just unavailable this evening. Uh, Tim Clark and Susan Swan, um, who are two experienced math people. Who have been involved in getting this course ready. Um, there's a lot of uh. Conversations that still need to happen and again, at the Haver Committee as well as math department. Uh, and then bringing it to the board, we'd like to talk about it as a graduation requirement, how do we bring it in? What is the right way to do it? Those conversations are still ongoing, uh, not quite ready to do that yet. Um. There's gonna be financial algebra woven into the course. Uh, career planning in selected units. Um, talking about choosing a career we recognize in school that college is not. For everyone and my, my mantra that I've spoken to many kids and families about. Um, trying to um, express where I'm coming from is that. For me, I want all kids to have a plan when they leave high school. And it doesn't necessarily have to involve college and I think the more we. Add on to what we're doing with students, uh, our work-based learning, I believe we're up to thirteen actually participating. Uh, there's another three this week going up to Burlington, um, to look at welding. Um, and look at a program up there and and what is, what is for post-high school. Uh. I, I don't really have much more right now to report than that myself.
Okay. David, you're up.
Thank you, Molly. Okay. A question and a comment. The question is. Has financial literacy been implemented? Uh, at Bellas Falls Union High School here in the second semester?
Uh, it will, it's planned to be, yes, David. We haven't started the second semester yet, so.
The comment, the comment is that there have been some of us who have requested that we have a dialogue. On this going back to at least last fall. You will find in your inboxes now, um, specific uh requests for that dialogue, which has never happened. And has been postponed in October, postponed again tonight. And I have great fears, gonna be postponed until after the program is, um. Um. Uh, on going here at Bellas Falls Union High School. I have a lot more to say, but I'm gonna save it for. Um, director's comments because we have a business manager who should have been on the road about an hour ago.
June. Um, I like this idea. I think that we should expand, I don't know what. It would be called, but another course, um, that has, you know. Interview skills, um, that kind of stuff, how to present yourself. And I would. Definitely vote to get rid of the senior project and have this kind of stuff that. Makes kids. More prepared to go out. More prepared to go out. On their own or whatever they do after high school rather than. Oh, I'm gonna cook a Thanksgiving dinner. What are the steps? Um I know that people are gonna argue with me that had that 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 is relevant and. But I think that um this would be a great thing and um adding another course or adding on to this. Interview, uh resume, um inter, you know, that kind, that would be much more helpful um. To the seniors, I think, than doing a. Um senior presentation.
Margot has her hand up.
Um, Margot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um I just wanted to sort of. Add a few thoughts and comments on this topic and I guess ask for a little bit of clarification from David. So, you know, we have, uh David has been bringing up this topic for quite some time and. You know, I think there's two different ways that it could be looked at. One is we. Get a presentation about this new course and how it's going and what's included. And then there's a different request or question about. How is Haver money being? Because we're funding half of this position through Haver money. Or maybe the all of financial literacy through Haver. And so I just kind of want to ask David, like, what specific, what aspect of it are you interested in? Um so I'm gonna just get in that other little thought before you maybe have a chance to answer, David. Just because I want to make sure that everybody's clear about. What you're looking for um so that they know what kind of presentation to present. But I'm also really glad that we got the document that we did. Um it was really great to see sort of how the course is laid out. And uh June, I wholly agree that it would be really great to have. Resume building and interview skills. That's something every student will end up needing throughout their whole life. Um and I'm also glad to hear that it's going to Haver because if we are funding it through Haver, we want to make sure that the committee is on board. And has comments and questions. And that the donor is okay with all of this. So those are just some of my questions and thoughts.
David, you're up.
Thank you, Molly. Um just as an aside, I would love to see the testimonial. From Maureen Haver endorsing this canned program which we've just bought. Now, as far as what my questions are, it's in everybody's inbox right now, so you look at those questions. Um and I have a somewhat different characterization of the summary that uh we received from John this afternoon. On the financial literacy offering. I think it's a bunch of garbage. My personal opinion.
Anybody else on financial literacy? All right, um Jim, thanks for staying. I didn't just thought maybe if something came up, you'd. Be a wealth of knowledge on our budget discussion.
All right, we'll start on the the bond. I'll try to get some connections going and. You know, we'll see who's doing the legal counsel. Now, it used to be Paul Giuliani that would do that, but he passed away. So.
Can't get him.
No. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
You guys have any questions? On the budget? You want to present the budget, John?
Send the budget.
You want to present the budget to the rest of the board that we're here? You want to, you want to talk about it, you want to.
Uh yeah, hi, law.
We're, we gotta, we gotta get a budget approved.
Hi, I'm the lowlights. We we talked tonight about um positions that. Possibly, we may, we're gonna add in, uh the committee decided not to.
Thank you.
In a, an ELA interventionist and a another health professional. Uh. We have a lot of the um amounts now in proper. Organized lines in the accounting uh piece that we're using to identify um. What we're actually spending and what we're actually spending it on. Uh. What else?
We talked about some adjustments to um utilities. Um, you know, making sure we've got enough budgeted for oil, electricity.
Plowing.
No plowing, et cetera. Um because. You know, last year at this time when we we went through that, obviously, oil was. At a different place. This is the best way to say it. So um so we're going back and looking at that. We've added some things in there and looking at some other pieces. Um.
Those are a lot of little things like the. Fuel for the driver's ed car, you know, it just didn't feel like it was enough in there. So we're gonna ask some more questions. It's a hybrid car, maybe it isn't gonna take much, but feels like it's not an option. So we're not ready to vote on a budget yet, and we're gonna have a special budget meeting. Next week, and he's gonna give us a time. We're gonna have to have a special meeting to work on budget and see if we can't get a. You know, budget approved.
And we'll make all these adjustments and see. Exactly where we are after adjusting these points. Um. We've talked about the addition of a trainer and how that's been so beneficial for our kids. Um so we're gonna maintain, certainly maintain her um. Other costs, the the add-on cost to uh. The healthcare and stuff like that. They're just stuff that we have to go by, so we're paying attention to it. Um and. Just keep an eye on it so it doesn't go out of control. Um. What else?
Pretty much.
I think that's it, yeah. All right. Any questions for John on the budget? I see none, so let's move on to new business review and approve the policies. Priscilla, you got that?
Yes, um I would make a motion that we improve D three, D six and C two policies. They were posted, one was posted ten fourteen, D two was, and D six and C two posted twelve six. So um if there's any questions on those. Glad to talk, talk about that. Um. Basically, the, uh let me quickly talk about it first. D three um uh was reviewed with Ricky. And um we looked at the state recommended one and what Ricky recommended as far as going through it, making sure that we had. Everything in order and that we had covered. Um that was needed to be sure that our technology ran smoothly. D six. Um. Adjustments needed to be made to the um statute. That was listed on the one that we had previously used in our district. What was D? Was um under D fourteen, that's now D six. To align with our other policies and with um. The state wanted to make it easier for us to pull it up and change if something needs to be changed because they review them periodically. But the statute has changed too. It's now twenty-one, twenty-one, became two. And the um requirements for um class. Sizes and that have changed as a result of that. Um. The. Grades, the elementary grades and that were kept the same, which do not affect the high school anyway. But twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, there were changes in the number of students that a teacher could be addressing. For example. A teacher shall not exceed a hundred students now. And um the class average has to be fewer than twenty-five students per teacher, which ours definitely are. Um in grades four through twelve. So we added in the changes, elaborate media specialists is required. So we added in those changes. The rest of it is very little change of just as far as wording, for example. We don't have a commissioner of education, we have a secretary of education. So we changed that. Um and C two was the alcohol and drug policy. We looked at our previous code F seven. Um and just made sure that we were covering anything that was in there previously. And updated to make sure that that our district was in compliance. For example, we need to treat it as a medical issue. And um we put any definitions and we put in um. The uh notifications to the parents in in that and made sure that it was in compliance with that. But we've just updated. The previous to be our new C two.
I have a question about that one. Is vaping considered a regulated substance under this policy?
Yes, for for it, I would be because it's, and I think there's a point where it says vaping because. Um because that's an illegal drug for our students. It just they're bad.
You're also at the back of the tree zone.
And it sounds, you know, on the school product, it's considered an influence of an illegal drug, regulated substance or alcohol in the school property. Or any school-sponsored activity away from. Or within the school, shall be subject to discipline consistent with the district's policy. Okay, so yes, it it's illegal for our students, so it will be considered under that clause.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? I have a motion to.
You have a motion.
You made a motion. The motion to approve policy D three, D six and C two. David?
You're muted, David.
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Deb?
I.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jason?
I'd like to abstain.
Abstain. Motion passes. We um I'm gonna skip around this, everybody gets this in their notebook or whatever they're using, uh date the next meeting, January twenty-third. There will be a meeting before that for budget.
Board meeting and then the board's budget.
Director's comments. David?
Let me unmute myself here, Molly.
Yeah.
The state of Vermont requires twenty-one credits for graduation. Bellas Falls Union High School requires twenty-eight credits for graduation. These twenty-eight credits have often acted as a stumbling block with regard to high school student access to our tech centers. What are we gonna throw overboard in order to make financial literacy a graduation requirement? My first statement. My second statement is, there is actually quite a backstory as to how we got to twenty-eight credits. Um which occurred at a time when enrollments were declining at Bellas Falls High School. Uh which is also the same time that we went to a block schedule. And where uh previous to the block, um approximately fifteen percent of a teacher's day uh was spent. Planning when we got to block schedule, it became twenty-five percent. So you combine more credits with less teaching time. And by the G, it's awful hard to uh reduce staff to keep it in line with what your um previous student teaching loads actually were. Something for people to think about. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Margot?
So I have two things um that I want to bring up and one is um. So as a board, you know, we often talk about consistency with policies and procedures, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. However, sometimes I'm feeling that there are some items as a board where we show our own inconsistencies. And they often come across as kind of pointing out, say, specific individuals um within the school community. For example, in minutes, we rarely list full commentary of public comment. Verbatim. And we did have a request, though, to have one. Uh posted verbatim in our minutes. And then. As a board, we continue to use those verbatim minutes uh or not minutes, but the verbatim. Coverage in the minutes from one individual is sort of a talking point for quite a few months. Um but we didn't have other verbatim. Commentaries put into the minutes and um. I just feel like that that's, you know, maybe it's something we need to discuss, what goes into the minutes, what doesn't. But we should be consistent. Um and then, for example, another inconsistency that. I've been noticing is that sometimes when we're talking about finances or questions about finances, which. Is very much within our purview and it's wonderful that we are. Keeping on top of those things. But I also feel like sometimes it's targeting certain individuals within our staff. By listing like their specific position and why they're doing this. And then we're very general about. In comparison and keeping sort of the other person kind of anonymous. So I just wanted to um. Point those things out because I just feel like as a board, we're supposed to remain aware and question. But that we're also supposed to be respectful and consistent and sort of our. Somewhat neutrality in dealing with in individuals and people and. You know, and I think we often hear, well, I'm here for the students. And I think I've stated before that, well, I'm here for our school community. There's a lot of people who work in our buildings. That are a part of that school community. And I've just been feeling like we've been very. Sort of as a board, sort of honing in and really targeting a few individuals and, you know, I just. Want us as a board to um. Watch how we express some of our. Ideas or concerns. I think it's very valid and important that we do. But that we remain, you know, as Priscilla always says, that we respect each other. And that we try to find ways to not feel like we're certainly like we're targeting specific people within our school community. And so the other piece that I want to mention tonight is that I have not submitted yet my letter of um. Resignation from the board, but I do plan to be stepping down at the end of this term. And when I say term, I mean March. So um I was elected last year to a three-year term, so I will be stepping down early from. Uh my position and I just want to express. One that I have greatly appreciated serving on both the Rockingham Board over time and then the High School Board. I feel like people who come to these boards have a lot of diverse background and interests. And I really appreciate sort of the coming together of ideas because I think it keeps all of us questioning and engaging. And really trying to make our schools better. And I have appreciated all of that. And I want to just sort of publicly put it out there before I submit my actual resignation because. January is the time to uh get petitions from the town hall. So this is Rockingham that I'm speaking to because I'm a Rockingham representative. And that uh I hope that we have people who are interested in picking up ballots to. Take on the remainder of my, so the remainder of my three-year term, which is two years. So. Thank you all, because I have learned so much and appreciate being able to discuss. Different topics and engage in educational discussions with all of you and all the past board members that I have served with. Thank you.
I can't hear any of you guys. You're up, Deb.
Something happened to the volume. I couldn't hear anything at all. Uh, I would only reiterate what I had talked to, spoken about at the W N E S U meeting, which some of you are aware. I don't think we're doing the best job to serve the public. It's not as big a deal with high school students, but they also have younger brothers and sisters whose parents cannot go to work and take care of children when school systems decide to take a whole week off or half days off or those sort of things, although we continue to plunge more and more money into it. I also want to say that I'm sure people have realized I have noticed that I'm becoming a little bit more aggressive at at meetings, and that's because I'm getting fed up. I'm getting fed up with the way that things are working. There's people in our board members are not being listened to. The budgets keep going up. We seem to be too passive to stop any of that growth or to try to make the, get the best bang for the buck out of the money that we have to spend and the taxpayers that we have to tax, including ourselves. I too, as Margot, am finishing out my term and will not be rerunning in March. Some of you might be happy to hear that. Others might say, oh, shoot, we need another person from Rockingham to run from the high school. I know I'm a squeaky wheel. I try to care a lot about the parents and what we have to do for them. I know a lot of you are here because you care for the education piece, but for me, it's really about making sure that the education gets the best bang for its buck for our students and allowing the recovery period for their parents who can't keep a job and keep their kids younger than thirteen home alone. It's a very important struggle. And I understand the original piece of this high school was initially, I thought, to put another school building in here where we could have had daycare and other kinds of things, other programs from years past that never occurred. So we're doing nothing to assist those parents that can't keep their kids home and keep a job at the same time. So those things are bothersome to me at both SU level and at the high school level. And I have tried to keep my temper, but I have to say, when things keep moving forward financially and we keep getting deeper and deeper into it. But even with all this asset money, by the way, slash bonds, slash whatever tax dollars, I'm greatly concerned. And I only have a few more meetings left. And thank you. Please, everyone, try to be safe. It is getting cold up.
Thank you. Brenda? Priscilla?
Okay. We don't always agree with each other. But we bring a lot of diversity. A lot of ideas. And as long as we listen to each other and we show that respect, as Margot said, I defer to respect. As long as we show that respect and truly listen to each other, we can come out a meeting with a lot of new ideas. We can think about what the others have said. And maybe it's not the direction we thought of first, but we may want to go in a slightly different direction because we either add or take away something that a member said. When we listen, wholeheartedly give that member a chance to speak without interrupting them and without cutting them off. It it means a lot and allows us to come together as a board and develop some really good ideas. I am truly sad to hear that Margot is stepping away with years left in her service because she has been valuable on both boards that I've served on, both the Rockingham board and the high school board. I'm sad that Deb is stepping away. Deb has some great ideas, don't always agree, like I said, and with either one of them, but by listening to them, I come out with new ideas and new thoughts. And I can adjust mine as a result of that. So I think that's an important thing. That care for others, that consideration for others is an important part of our community and something we need to teach and something we need to model as board members. Thank you.
June?
Almost done. Thank you.
Jason?
Molly, you know, it's funny that I you know, every, there's not a meeting that I ever want to come to because I I feel like we don't get a lot done. It seems like we're always trying to run up a slippery slope and we just keep getting have to keep going back to the starting line. And so like, I hate to see Margot and Deb leave because I think that we're actually you know, as a board, kind of united and we're going in one direction. I was joking around at the business office last week that I only have one more year until my term is up, I think, twenty-four. But then I said, well, I might have to run again because I hate to lose anything. So you know, I think, I think the biggest issue that we have is leadership. And I think the old saying goes, you need to either lead, follow, or get out of the way. Thank you.
So I I'm sorry to hear Margot and Deborah both signing out because I mean, I think it takes some real experience. Margot is man on the policy committee and she has some she has some real knowledge on how some of that stuff goes and it's nice to have that knowledge. And Deb has been involved in town politics and the school boards for a long time and you know, whether we agree or disagree, she she has some real knowledge and and you know, it's it's sorry to see those folks go. I also know that it takes a lot of your time and it and it's a stressful thing sometimes and it's one more thing at the end of the day. And, you know, so I wish you both some quieter Monday nights and and I hope that there's some community members that are, you know, are interested in getting involved because, you know, I'm I'm to blame as much as some of the rest of us sitting around this table. I you know, when my term is up, I'm not going to do it again. I I don't believe that you know, you should be on it for for years and years and years because it's kind of like the government, you know, we gotta get new blood in here and get new things going on because that is important. And so I hope that we can spark some community members to get involved because that's the hard part is when you figure out nobody's running and then you're like, well, you know, gotta do it. Somebody's gotta do it. And you know, then you get, so you do it long enough so that you're you get comfortable with it. You know what's coming up next and it just feels like it's part of your day. But I hope we get some more members. We got a seat available right now in Grafton. We have a couple in Rockingham open, so let's hope we can get the word out and get some people that are interested. We need a motion to go into executive session on the board and Andy. Need to go into executive session and Priscilla is gonna have the wording.
Okay, I would motion to enter into executive session to discuss a what kind of matter?
Personnel matter.
Personnel matter where premature public knowledge can place the individuals and or the board at a disadvantage and invite Andy, our superintendent, the boss and our superintendent.
Yep.
Do we need John?
No.
No, okay.
All in favor?
I.